Now we're just getting everything finalized. So no, we won't have this issue again. Everybody falls in succession and everything can keep rolling as business is normal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move over to public comment. Anybody inside the chamber who'd like to make public comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. How are you?
Good evening. Turned around here, speak to larger audience. Tim Kelly, 62, Westview. In regards to the high school building project, I know we're still working through a long list of punch list items, some large, some small, to complete the facility. What's troubling right now is the state of the gym floor in the new high school. The finish has apparently failed and is peeling off in a significant way. It's pretty bad and a little disappointing since we just moved in two months ago. Perhaps in our rush to try to complete the building this summer, the finish was applied outside normal temperature and humidity ranges. I'm not sure. Anyway, the gym floor obviously needs to be redone. This is not a one-day repair job, and basketball season starts on December 1st. During committee reports tonight, I would like to hear specifics on the plan and timeline to fix the gym floor, and importantly, who is responsible for the repair costs, the vendor or us? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else inside the chambers like to make any comments? Do we have anybody online?
So we're back with our audio.
Excellent.
We'll give it a minute for the hands.
All right. If you're online and if you wish to make public comment, please raise your hand.
No hands raised.
No hands raised. Okay, we will stop with public comment and we'll go on to item G.
Make a motion to approve the October 8, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the October 22, 2024, regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to H. We have no communication of written appeals, so we'll start off with Aye. Report of the 1928 Building Committee. Our committee met last week and we favored in motion. We made a massive decision and voted to select KBE Building Corporation, which was the lowest qualified bid as a general contractor for the 1928 building renovations in the amount of $12,775,000. We are very excited about this. KBE is a Farmington company, and they are also excited to be able to do a project within their own town. We'll move on to the Farmington High School Building Committee.
Okay, so on Saturday, October 26, we had our open house, which enabled hundreds of people to come and take tours of the school. Overall, I think it was a wonderful event, and everyone who went really enjoyed it. The high school students were so engaged and interested in this event that they actually scheduled for themselves and created like an ending event at the end of the tours so that people could see what the students are doing in different clubs and activities, and they even had a bounce house for the younger children who were visiting the school. And my children spent like probably most of their time there in that bounce house, so that was a great ending to the tours. And I think most people were really impressed with how the building looks. Our next meeting is, I think, not next week, next Wednesday, and I'm gonna see if Kat, you know the answer to the floor issue because I'm not aware of that problem.
Yep.
So you can respond to those comments.
Of course. So the gym floor work is being done starting this week to fix it by the contractor. Not an ideal situation with the paint coming up, but it is being fixed. We're doing it for the next three weeks, so it'll be done by December 1st, which is this break in between sports season so that it's ready for basketball season.
And Kat, is that this is a contractor issue?
Yes, it's a contractor issue. We are not paying for this.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to J. Report of the Chair. We'll make a couple announcements. As everyone has seen, fall leaf collection is on its way. This year, town's curbside leaf collection is facing challenges due to the ongoing drought and lack of rainfall. Even though all the leaf box trucks are fitted with mesh screens, the collected dry leaves are producing a significant amount of small debris and dust that escapes the top of the trucks. Town crews are doing their best to minimize the dust and debris, but the ongoing drought conditions are posing a significant challenge for the leaf pick cleanup. Crews will be doing at least two runs of leaf collections this fall, weather permitting. We thank the residents for their patience as our crews navigate these more challenging conditions. And also, as you're all aware of our fire risks, the state of Connecticut remains under extreme fire warning and drought advisory to the overly dry conditions. Hartford County has seen numerous brush fires ignite due to these conditions. The vast majority of Connecticut wildfires unfortunately result in human, or result of human activities. In these conditions, even small sparks from the following can ignite a wildfire and properly discarding smoking material, ATV and UTV activity, especially without spark resistors, dragging of chains from trailers, use of outdoor grills, campfires, power tools and equipment that generate heat or sparks. The town asks the residents to follow fire safety measures, refrain from outdoor burning, and to avoid risky activities near fire-prone areas, preventing wildfires as a job for all residents. Help to protect our neighbors, our communities, and our first responders risking their lives to keep us safe. Also, in the last 24 hours, our town has celebrated our veterans. I was able to be a part and invited to the Farmington High School for their student assembling honoring our veterans and their school community. The students played songs and instruments from each division of our military, and I know all the other schools had similar events throughout the day yesterday. Also, in the afternoon, our veterans came together in front of our town hall at the memorial for a moment of reflection where myself, Amy, and Dave were there, where they honored the present and our deceased veterans. And then lastly, this afternoon, our Rotary Club of Farmington held a luncheon for our veterans at the Farmington Club to honor them. And last but not least, we had the grand opening ribbon cutting of our new sim/restaurant bar called Stadium 15, located inside the up-house formerly known as the Marriott, located at 15 Farm Springs Road. Please check it out, it's a great little place. And we'll move on. We'll go to the Board of Education Liaison.
Board of Ed last met on October 21. There was an update on the transportation with specialty. They're continuing weekly meetings with specialty transportation, and specialty has also hired new drivers. Unfortunately, some have also left as they get pulled away by other transportation companies, but as overall, I'm told it's a net positive in terms of the number of more hiring versus who have left. There were discussions of the school's program development plan, results outcome, which essentially is looking at the standardized tests and how that, how those scores compare year over year, as well as on an equity basis. The class size report shows that Farmington population of students still continues to increase, albeit ever gradually, but every other district seems to be showing a decrease, and Farmington is growing. The projected currently, as of the enrollment report, for 24-25, it's 4,096 students. 25-26 is projected ever so slightly more, 4,101. The budget, so that will help the board evaluate budget needs based on enrollment, and budget discussions have in fact started. The drivers for the budget are likely our contractual obligations, the increased costs of goods and services, utility costs, and the most significant is special services, which is fairly common as we get more students moving into the district who have, who require special services. And then the board also discussed and reviewed several of the board policies.
Excellent. Thank you. Conservation inland wetlands.
Inland wetlands last met on November 6, so last week. Two significant projects. One is City of Hartford has submitted an application for Patterson Park for the construction of roadways, trails, parking, boardwalks, dock supports. I know there's been some discussion in the news lately that Patterson Park is starting to get ready to reopen to the public. There is a hearing scheduled for that work, for that application on December 4 because the work is partially within a wetlands area, so they have to do a hearing. And then the Country Club of Farmington has filed an application for the replacement of its existing irrigation piping, and at this point, the status is that the Wetlands Commission has accepted the application, and at the next meeting, they'll decide whether it requires a hearing or not.
Excellent. Thank you. EDC.
Okay. This morning, as Joe mentioned, they had the ribbon cutting at Stadium 15 on Farm Springs Road in Farmington. It's a craft kitchen and golf simulator bar, and the one thing that I wanted to know, or that I thought was important to note, is these are Farmington residents that are investing in Farmington, and I just, I just want to make sure that I mention that. I thought that was special. The other thing that's happening for EDC is tomorrow morning at 7:45, it's going to be the first breakfast sponsored by Ion Bank. They're the new sponsor for the business breakfasts. David Radatori will speak from Ion Bank, and the speaker is going to be Tom Perotti, Chief Investment Strategist for Wealth Fest. The next meeting for EDC is tomorrow night at 5:30 in council chambers to discuss, recap, and finalize the cultural district designation, which we'll be talking about a little later on.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Town Planning and zoning.
Town Planning and zoning had their November meeting, and it was Monday night. I had a conflict, so I wasn't in council chambers when they had their meeting, but a lot of the same types of applications are coming forward. There's a lot of activity. You can see now on Route 6, you can see that it's fenced off, the gas stations now, and you know, construction has started, you know, remediation, and then obviously full construction. And then on New Britain Avenue, there's that apartment complex going up, you know, too, so there's a lot of activity and a lot of applications.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll move over to K. Report of the Town Chair.
Town man.
I'm sorry, Tom. Yeah, I thought you threw her a curve.
You have the written report in front of you. I just want to highlight a couple of things. As you can see from the report, we were awarded our designation for a cultural district, and you can see from Rose Ponte's memo to me, it was quite an event that they went on the bus tour, and it was great, and just want to publicly thank each of the organizations that participated. They did a wonderful job of showcasing their impressive organizations, investing time and resources toward a tour that was a great success. And when I was talking to Rose, I said, you know, here in Farmington, we don't do anything lightly, and our historic district, people got dressed up in costumes, we had two buses, we had eight state people. I mean, we really laid it out, and it was a really great event. And the cultural district state people, they won't say it publicly, but they told us privately that they really, really were impressed about how great Farmington did and how we came together and did such a great tour in both Unionville and Farmington and all the people. So really proud of that, and Rose and the group in the cultural district, thank you. They did an excellent job for us, so I just wanted to mention that. Community services, we're in real busy time with Nancy Parent and her group, just giving some different things that have been going on, and also they're going into the holiday season. So if anyone wants to do any kind of extra volunteering or doing anything, please reach out to Nancy. They do a lot of different things with gifts and food shares and a lot of activities. So they partner with various organizations, they partner with the police department, the fire department, so it's a very busy time for them, and they're doing a great job on that. It's gearing up for all that. I was looking for some input about our auditor selection. You can see from my report, if you remember, it wasn't that long ago, I'll guess in May, we had talked about, we extended our auditors on a one-year contract, and we said that if we wanted to go out for RFP, we would have to be doing it around now to go out for RFP, so we'd be ready to go if we were going to have new auditors. So I wanted to track back with you all to see if you would like us to go out for an RFP, or the other option would be to extend again for potentially another year. I don't think the situation has changed much, meaning that there's really not a lot of auditors to pick from. We haven't had these auditors for that long, meaning that in my worldview comparison is that our last auditors were 30 years with us, and so these auditors have been, I think, on five. We'd be more than happy to go out for an RFP, but if the council chose, I'd also be comfortable with us extending the contract for one more year, but really, it's a policy decision of the council, so I'm just looking for some input about that.
Excellent. Brian, any questions or concerns about that?
From everything that they presented with us, I thought they've been giving us great reports and great suggestions on how we can improve, so I mean, I've been satisfied.
Excellent. Patty?
So I know that it's best practices to get different auditors in to review your books, people, because the argument being the auditors can get familiar, and there's not necessarily the same degree of openness or critical review. That being said, I agree, Kathy, having been on the auditor committee, whatever the name of our ad hoc committee was to select the auditors, I don't remember. I think there were maybe two that we were, out of the four that applied, there were two that we were interested in, and others were either very high or didn't appear to have, like cost-wise. I think that five years is not necessarily too long yet, so I'm comfortable extending the contract another year.
Excellent. Sarah?
I agree with the comments from Patty and Brian, so I'd be comfortable extending the contract a year, too.
All right. Dave?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the extension.
All right. Amy?
Yeah, I think it's good to have somebody in there for a few years to really get to know the system and how we do things, and then I also think it's not a good idea to have somebody for too long, so I think that this is a good solution.
Excellent. Keith?
I agree. Nothing to add.
Excellent. I think you have a direction.
Okay. We'll be, Joe will call the auditors and get a proposal for it, and then look for another extension, and you'll see that on the agenda in January or February. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then you have the quarterly, my quarterly report, and I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions if you have on anything on the quarterly report.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy on the quarterly report?
I had one, just kind of question. I think there was, and I left my notes on my desk at work, but I think there was a grant that we applied for, for one of the, Russ applied for, for one of our projects, and he was going to reapply again in the, in January of 2025. Is that ringing a bell?
The big, we did not get the big bridge grant.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yes, and we are in the process right now of reapplying for that again.
My question was, do we ever get any feedback as to why we didn't get the grant?
That one, that one, we didn't get any feedback. I think that that was, that's a very, very large grant, and I think that they look at these infrastructure projects, and even though I think this bridge project to us is a very, very big project, it's probably like second tier to the federal government type of projects, but we still feel that it met most of the, all the criteria, and we are working with our federal congresspeople and senators, and they've been giving us letters of support. And so Russ is in the process right now of trying to put something together for us. I think, you know, honestly, if this, if we, we're going to need more feedback on this and through CROG, because this is a very large grant, and to get this project really off its feet, we're going to need a grant like this, and if we don't get this grant, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do, because again, the money's very large, and so I appreciate your comments, but at that point, we, they said it was a good grant, we just, they didn't, they just didn't fund it.
I was just curious if they do that.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions?
I have just, I guess, a comment or a question. I saw last week the new sign, the speed monitoring on 177.
Oh, okay.
Go down every, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
As someone who uses that crosswalk and watches people who's by me, is there, has there been discussion about what to do with the data after it's been collected?
I think the traffic review board will take a look at it, and they usually, that's what they do. They look at some of the data and look to see if there's anything. A lot of times, the, it's really, a good portion of it is used to try to slow down the traffic, and I mean, we'll look at the data. I think that in general, we are probably going to start working with CROG on data townwide because I think between, and everyone has probably noticed it, and I don't know if I said it publicly, but I've talked about it a few times, is that between COVID and people's work schedules and everything changing, our traffic patterns in general have changed throughout town, and a lot of our studies and a lot of what we have had for traffic data has been based on those, what we think of, the morning commute and this and that. And so I'm not sure what the solutions are, but I think it's going to be interesting to start collecting data again all over town to see if there's more different cut-throughs and where people are going and crosswalks and different things that potentially we can add, but the, I mean, least to my opinion is that the whole traffic pattern is much different, much different.
And I think people are driving faster, too.
Yes.
Yes. Does CROG have, I mean, because obviously, I think, as Farmington, we don't really have the resources to really, I mean, we have a traffic review board, but it's not as if they have deep civil engineers and transportation engineers. Does CROG have, or are they planning to look at other alternatives for traffic calming for, that members could then?
You know, I don't really know off the top of my head, but let me talk to Russ about it, and let me report back on that.
It's really a point of curiosity, because I think we need to do something, and I don't know that Farmington has the resources to figure it out.
I think, you know, between the speed and different things, it's, you know, a state, I mean, it's a lot of issues in a lot of different towns, you see it, and it's not actually a new issue, it just seems like, you know, hopefully with CROG, and that's what we use CROG for, what's the newest and kind of new way to do traffic, slowing people down, because obviously, we don't have the resources, and you know, we don't really, the speed humps and some of those things are really quite outdated, and a lot of people don't like them, believe it or not, especially if it's on their road, so there's got to be different solutions, so let me talk to Russ and see what's, what's up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I had a question on the Recreation Director. It seems like you, you know, had 45 respondents, you narrowed it down to eight. Sounds like that's going to get, kind of take place over the next month and a half. Just in a more general sense, do they all have like experience and like substantial experience?
When you say all, the 45, no?
No, 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 eight.
Yeah, yeah.
The eight that have been narrowed.
Yeah, we felt good about the eight. We felt good about the eight. We were, we felt really good when we saw 45 come through, but really, when you narrowed it down, I'd say, you know, probably, probably 15, maybe, were close, and the eight were good.
Yeah. And then, and then the panel that does the actual, does basically the, you know, the interview, I would say, the interview oral part of this, it's internal and external members, so the external members, are they stakeholders in the recreation program?
So the panel is going to be, we have two panels, and Kat, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I have it. It's going to be the West Hartford Parks and Recreation, the head of their division, so that person. We also have, I think, the baseball, is it the baseball?
Yeah, we have a representative from Farmington Little League, because they're a kind of a partner in the recreation programs.
Kat is involved, Russ Arnold is involved, Nancy Parent is involved because she ran it, and also the school system, the athletic director is involved. So those are the, those are the panel people. So it would be two separate panels, they run through both of them. They also had a written question that they had to answer and bring to the panels, and so they're bringing a written question, which different kinds of policy decision kinds of questions, what they think about different things, they're bringing that to the panel, they go run through one panel, run through the next panel, then we score between the questions and their interview skills, and then the panel brings back to me, hopefully the top two people for me to interview, if there's three, but they kind of give me my recommendation, and then I meet with them and look more, in theory, which usually typically works, they're qualified, it's more than a fit and feel of what we want in the town of Farmington.
And then, do you think there'll be a period of time where Nancy will help the onboarding of this, this position?
Yeah, Nancy has willing, is willing to do that, yep, so she'll be involved in it and in kind of the transition.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Yeah, just one other comment. I wanted to recognize that, you know, town staff and, and Public Works have been working to repair that much-needed water fountain on the rails to trails. I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get lost, that that was accomplished, and that should be finished off after the leaves get picked up.
Yes, the never-ending water fountain. The water fountain.
Let's make another one.
The water fountain, yes, so the water fountain, I didn't realize how old the water fountain was, and so the water fountain has gone through numerous things over the last couple of months, so it's, it's been fixed, then, well, we've had parts, then we had more parts we had to get, then it was, it was turned on and there was a leak, and so then there were various things, so it almost sounds like it reminds me of a car, is that when you fix one thing, then the next thing, and then the next thing. So my understanding is that now, I think the water gets turned off in the winter anyway, so they are ordering more parts, and I have been promised that at the start of the spring, the water fountain will be fixed and everyone can use it.
That's what I heard. Thank you for that. Awesome.
Patty, have something else?
Just a follow-up question on the Recreation Director. We budgeted for a half year when we did that, so January 1.
Yeah. Yes.
And I just want to make a comment about the cultural district. I was able to be a part of that and to witness Rose line up all these different locations that we stopped that day, and it just ran seamlessly, and for her to have those seven organizations, everybody had their part, they did such a great job, and again, like Kathy said, they, the state people were just, they were ecstatic at the end of that tour, how happy they were, how well it went off, and it's a great job by Rose and all the counterparts that make that work, so thank you very much. And Keith will call for an acceptance, please.
Make a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Appointments, L.
I gotta get there.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm, we're going to move a motion to appoint Jay Bembauer to be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission for a modified term ending September 30, 2025.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any other appointments?
I didn't, sorry, I didn't think so. Go ahead. No, I was going to go on to N2, so if you've got something.
That's the appointment I have.
Perfect. That's, just wanted to make sure that's the only one we had also.
Yeah.
All right, we have M, no old business, and we'll move on to N2, please.
Jen, item N2. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and the advice of the town attorney and deny the request made by Roland Monterosso dated September 23, 2024, to defer the collection of property taxes on a property located at 25 Locust Lane.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
So this is a somewhat different request for the town. We have not seen this. What this is, is that gentleman is asking us to defer taxes, to defer taxes, and what we have done is that we basically asked the advice of the town attorney, and we've also had an opinion from the tax collector, and they are both recommending strongly that we do not do that. This is, it seems to me that this is not a hardship request, this is based on someone waiting because they have to go through a social service process to find out if social services is what they're going to do with the house, and because it's a hardship, because it's not a hardship, I would strongly recommend that we do not consider this, because one is that if that, if we do start considering requests to defer taxes that are not hardships, it could potentially open up the door for everyone asking to defer their taxes for various reasons, and even though none of us like to pay taxes, we are in the business here of collecting taxes, and the town of Farmington really does not defer taxes, and if we were going to consider it, I would really only be recommending it on very, very limited occasions, and it would have to be. would have to be some sort of very strong hardship reason. And so, I would say that I would take the advice of our tax collector and also our town attorney, that we do not do this.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Gen item N3, to award a contract for the purchase of one 2025 Jacobson AR 530 rotary mower to MTE Equipment Solutions, Inc. of New Milford, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $77,561.21.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
This motion is to contract with a vendor to purchase a new rotary mower that will be used by the grounds director, staff for their daily mowing operations, and snow-clearing sidewalks in the winter. The unit acquired will replace a 2006 mower. We have funds budgeted at $83,000 in the capital budget, and it's being awarded on the terms and conditions of a cooperative bid.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Gen item N4, to accept a $28,202, sorry, $28,202.68 donation from the Hometown Foundation to the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of a UTV from Connecticut Power and Sport of Wallingford, Connecticut.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
The Farmington Volunteer Fire Department and the Director of Fire Rescue Service recommend that the town council accept this generous donation. Based on the town of Farmington's donation policy, any donation that exceeds $10,000 must be approved by the town council. The Hometown Foundation was looking to donate something to our fire department, and this is what they came up with. I think it would be something that's valuable to the town of Farmington. Just so you know, it does go to the fire department, but when things happen, we do share resources, so it would be useful for a police department, it's an off-wheel vehicle that they can use for various things. And so, we are very grateful for the Hometown Foundation for thinking of us and offering this generous donation.
Any questions?
Kathy, do you know why, or maybe Joe knows why, don't, the policy is that the town council is to approve more than $10,000?
I do. It's because at some time, we were getting some donations, and the council or myself were not aware of what the donations were, and then the donations, I'd, all of a sudden, I'd see something, and it was a big maintenance item later on, and we have like a big piece of equipment that I didn't know that we had accepted. And so, when we worked on this way back in the day, we decided $10,000, that was a number, it's probably low now, a little bit low, but just so there's an awareness that we're picking up a piece of equipment that's not going through the capital budget and things like that.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Gen item N5, to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreements, supervisor and non-supervisor, between the town of Farmington and local 2001 SEIU-CSEA for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
This motion covers both the supervisors and non-supervisors' collective bargaining agreements. These groups represent the town's division directors and other supervisors and professional staff. There are 24 members in both units. The tentative agreement is for a three-year contract, starting on July 1st, 2024, and goes through June 30th, 2027. The highlights is just some various language and procedural changes with really no net financial impact, but are positive enhancements to the town. Juneteenth will be an observed holiday for members of this bargaining unit in exchange for a floating day. There's some increases in health, healthcare costs, which are listed. The cost of, the wages are 3% each year. These units represent our higher-level managers. The contract essentially covers their basic working conditions of the units. At the time, there was not a need for any substantial changes in the contract, and the tentative agreement was ratified by the union membership. And I would recommend that the town council, I think this is a fair contract for our supervisors and non-supervisors, and like it said, it's really a working document, and really not a lot of changes in the, in the union document.
All right. Any questions?
What is the cost share of this kind? What does that actually address, the cost share?
So, 22%.
Right.
So, that's what they would have to pay out of their salary for the insurance.
Okay.
The town would pay the, the extra, the 80, what is it?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Yeah. Okay.
Good math.
I got it. Okay.
I can't read it, but I can say it.
Any other questions?
And then 27% for employees hired after July 10th.
Right.
So, it's like, it's like a tiered system.
Right.
Okay.
And to be fair, that a lot of our employees, what we have been doing is that these cost shares are high, with the thought that we're moving most of our employees on the HSA.
Okay.
And then the HSA is a lot less money than that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Did, but nope, figured it out. It was there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
N6, to approve the attached property tax refunds.
Second.
Motion is second.